It is six, six o'clock and the Curville City Council is in session. At this time, I would like to ask you to please stand for the invocation and the pledge led by Councilman Garcia.
Yes, and tonight I've invited another guest, Abigail Carpenter. She is a high school student here, and so she'll be leading us in the invocation and pledge. Thank you.
Let us bow our heads. Dear Lord, I thank you for this beautiful town that you have given us. I thank you that you will just bless all of the leaders of this town and that you will just help this town to prosper, God. I thank you that you will just bless every family in this town, Lord, and that we will just have a great year, God, in Jesus's name, amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I'd like to thank Abigail and her family for being here this evening, and she's also interested and she's kind of interested in government and public service as well. So I thought it'd be great to bring her in, too. Thank you for being here.
Thank you. If anyone present wants to speak on an agenda item, they need to sign up and present a speaker request form to the city secretary over here on my right in advance of the item being read into the record by the city secretary. When speakers are called, they are to come to the podium and begin by stating their name and address for the record. Note that public comment periods are for council to set aside time to specifically hear from you. Any questions that you might have will not be responded to until after public comments have concluded. I want to thank everyone in advance for helping by respecting these rules of procedure. Please remember that insulting or inappropriate comments and personal attacks will be ruled out of order. At this time, we have announcements of community interest. Mr. Cunius.
Thank you, Mayor. Welcome to everyone tonight. We've got a couple of activities to talk about that are coming up. They're still a little ways out, but we are, there's some things that we need to get done before we get to them, and we're certainly glad to have them back this year. First one is Family Fright Night. That's going to be Saturday, October 30th at Louise Hayes Park. And we are looking for people who want to set up a booth. We're looking for booth sponsors or car or tent booth sponsors. Also monetary sponsors for donations will be used to purchase candy and decorations. And you can find out more about that on the City of Curville's Parks and Recreation site. So encourage people to look at that. That's a fun event every year. We have a huge turnout two years ago, and as I said, we didn't get to have it last year, but we're glad to have it back. So the other event is November the 20th downtown. That's the Holiday Light Parade, another event that's always a lot of fun, and we are looking for floats. So if you're interested in putting a float together, I think we've had upwards of 90 in the past. So makes for a good long parade, a lot of fun for people who show up. All right. Also to remind everybody that we have the Curville River Festival, October 16th. We had this again two years ago. Last year, we weren't able to have it, but the one two years ago was a big hit. And this year, we're going to have Jared Neiman, cert acrobat, and Austin Mead. I think it runs from, let's see the times, I think it's from 9:30, excuse me, noon to 9:30, although there are events in the park that morning. Among other things, there's a beer fun run, a volleyball tournament, and exercise classes. So I'm going to have a lot of respect for people who do the beer fun run and then go on to the exercise class. And finally, we have a City of Curville Facebook page, which we have quite a few followers on. We have a City of Curville Police Department page. We now have a City of Curville Fire Department page. So I would encourage everybody to go out there and find that and like it. They have, they're going to have a lot of great information about what's going on at the fire department and of course, information during the year that's important for safety things. So encourage people to check that out.
All right, good. Thank you. Steer one extension of that. We also have a fire department fund at the Community Foundation and a police department fund at the Community Foundation. If individuals would like to contribute to those. Council members, any other item of community interest?
I just wanted to add that on your note, the police department fund is, they are trying to raise funds right now for a canine unit. And their goal is $80,000, and you can donate through the Community Foundation if you have any interest in helping our law enforcement officers obtain that canine unit.
And I would like to make two repeat announcements. The Doyle Community Center received our occupation certificate today, so we are legal. And October 9th will be the grand opening. It will be in the evening, and we'd love to have people come, so love to have you join us. And October 23rd, another Saturday, the airport, at the airport, we will be having races again. So we have 18-wheeler cabs coming and itty-bitty cars and Teslas and you name it, and they will be there. So we hope that the community will join us for that.
Yeah, drag races on the 23rd. Last year, it sold out so quick, and I was able to get in there and thoroughly enjoy it. Okay.
I have two announcements. One is that, of course, the city is always accepting applications for boards, and so I would highly encourage citizens to apply for those. It's not only an opportunity to learn more about our city, but you get to have a great impact in the decisions that are made. We'll be making appointments to four of those boards at our second regular meeting this month, so just be aware of that. If you need help applying for a board, you're more than welcome to contact my office or the city, and I'm sure we'll be more than happy to assist you with doing that. And I'll be personally interviewing and meeting with all the applicants for each board. So should you choose to apply, I look forward to seeing your application and meeting with you. And the second is for youth and young adults. We have a program called the Curville Area Youth Leadership Academy. It's for high school students through grades ninth through 12th, and the goal is to develop youth leaders committed to learning about local government. The council's going to be making appointments to that academy tonight, but I've been told that if we have any further applicants, the latest we can appoint them would be at our next meeting, again, that's the 28th. And for those that remember, this was a program that was officially a committee under the city council, known as the Curville Youth Advisory Committee, which I served on, and it was under Mayor Pratt's recommendation, and then moved to Mayor White, and now Mayor Blackburn. And so it greatly impacted my path to public service. So if you know of anybody that is interested in doing that, I would highly encourage you to encourage them to apply for this.
One clarification. Are you going to be interviewing all the applicants for the boards?
Yes.
We have teams.
We have teams that are assigned to do that.
I know, but council makes the final appointment, so that's our job to do that, too.
That's interesting. Okay. Visitor Citizens Forum. This agenda item is provided to allow citizens who have signed up ahead of time to address the council on any item not related to another specific item on the agenda. Has anyone signed up to speak?
Yes, sir. There are four. Raymond Tier.
Good evening. My name is Raymond Tier. I live at 546 Sandbend, Sandbend Drive here in Curville. I'm a fairly recent resident to Curville, only having moved here about a little over two years ago, but I've lived in the area for about 21 years. Mr. Mayor, members of the city council, ladies and gentlemen. It seems to be fashionable of late amongst elected officials and even government employees to view citizens, voters, and taxpayers with some degree of contempt and disdain as though citizens, voters, and taxpayers are a hindrance to the grand plans and high aspirations of officials and employees. I'm speaking to you this evening simply to remind you that government and its functionaries operate for the benefit of and according to the will of those same pesky citizens, voters, and taxpayers, or as President Lincoln so succinctly put it, government of the people, by the people, and for the people, specifically in regard to the recent petition drive to require a vote of the taxpayers on an actual bond issue before the City of Curville incurs any more debt on top of the $65 million already owed. There has been a lot of misinformation floating around as to the motives and the goodwill of the petitioners as though the petitioners were anti-police. Nothing could be further from the truth. The folks involved in the petition drive and those who signed the petition simply wanted to know basically two things. And I was one of the people, had a very, very minor role in circulating petitions, but everyone that I explained what the petition was about was eager to sign it. Two things. What is the plan that council's proposing for the building with its location? And how much will that proposed plan cost? Some have suggested that the need for bond election was badly delayed or has badly delayed the project and has needlessly run up the cost. If that is true, why was the new police facility included in city budgets as late as 2015 but never acted upon? And if the new facility is of such great urgency, why was nothing done by council during the recent pre-Wuhan virus economic boom years when interest rates were low and construction costs were low as well? Another swipe taken against citizens who simply wanted to have a say in how their tax money is spent charges that the bond election could not be held in the upcoming election cycle but must be delayed for the following cycle because the petition signatures were not verified until the day after the deadline. Did anyone on the city staff or city council bother to phone Mr. Ingram in the Secretary of State's office to ask for an extension due to the late certification of signatures? I have it on good authority that such extensions are quite easily obtained by smaller cities if they will just ask. And by the way, the petition drive would never have been needed if the motion by one of the council members to actually hold a bond election rather than to issue certificates of obligation if it had been passed by council rather than being allowed to die for lack of a second. Responsibility for that lies squarely with the majority of the council. To sum it up, do not try to blow smoke at us, citizens, voters, tax collectors, but simply tell us some things about government as a, and don't tell us that things about government are just too complicated for us to comprehend. Don't think that we're, you can simply shoo us away as though we were toddlers in diapers needing to get out of the way of the adults. Anyone who does not like citizens participating in city governance can easily relieve themselves of that horrible burden. For city staff, find another job. For council members, don't bother to run again for this office.
Okay, thank you. Thank you, Ms. Tier. Your time is up.
Robin Monroe.
Thank you, Mr. Tier.
Good evening. Thank you for allowing us to come to the Calhoun Center so we could have more people present. My name is Robin Monroe. I live at 32 Chaperal Drive, and I'm only here tonight. I don't have anything prepared to say, but I do, I'm responding to an op-ed that was done by Ms. Eichner on here. And so I just want to say that I was raised in a military family. I'm retired law enforcement. My children either serve in the military or law enforcement, and we were raised in a culture of honor. And a culture of honor is where people are held accountable for places that they choose to be in stewardship over things. And so I'm just here tonight to say that I'm heartbroken because we live in a city that everybody touts as being so wonderful, and we have people that are now willing to be involved in a democratic process of being like the sign behind you, your voice, your city. But when we do that, we're mocked. And so I'm just here to say respectfully that you all are being held accountable. And I know that we have media in print that keep you feeling protected because the facts aren't coming out, say, in printed media. But I'm just here to tell you that the citizens of Curville are very, very aware of what the facts are as far as the budget in 2019, where you all had a chance to go ahead and put a general bond election on in 2020. And the three council members up there, Ms. Clarkson, Mayor Blackburn, and Ms. Eichner chose to pull it from the budget. And I will continue to say this each and every meeting until you all get to the point that you will say the truth to the public. We deserve the truth of the facts of your decision-making, not some clandestine agenda. And I say that respectfully because all of you will be held accountable. You will. And I'm not saying it's threatening, but at some point, somewhere down the line, whether it be God or the people of Curville, you're going to be held accountable. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Ms. Monroe.
Bethany Puccio.
My name is Bethany Puccio. My home address where I live is 418 Crest Ridge Drive in Curville. At the last meeting, the Public Safety Complex was on the agenda, and it was the first opportunity that the council has had to address the questions and the concerns of the citizens that did sign this petition, of which there are well over 1,000. And we could have gotten many, many more if we continued to knock on doors because the majority of people that I asked about signing this did go ahead and sign it. So I just wanted to say how disappointing that is, that you did not all take the time to address us in any way, but kind of just brushed it aside and moved along. Councilwoman Hughes said at the last meeting that it's now going to cost us more and raise property taxes. But I just wanted to clarify that this particular CO, although a CO can be funded other ways, this CO was not. This CO was going to be funded through property taxes, so it's a mute point. And I would just like to have those statements stopped so that we're not misguiding the public. If interest rates are so low now and it's good to borrow money, which I think everybody agrees with that, then why were they, why were you only funding $7 million when we know it's going to cost at minimum 17 million? Why not put it to a bond election and borrow the whole thing upfront so that we can immediately begin to take care of the police department that has been neglected and pushed to the back burner for years? If three to five acres are needed for this, which is what we understand, which should cost around $1 million, why was this land not already acquired in the past four to five years? And secondly, why would you give away 33 acres of city-owned property to a developer last year just to turn around and purchase land in an inflated market? Couldn't money acquired from the sale of that land have been used to purchase the three to five acres needed? If you have a plan, why not be forthcoming? Just tell us what it is. If you can't tell us the location, fine, black that out. Don't tell us where it is if you can't jeopardize a real estate sale. But tell us the bullet points. Tell us the main ideas. How much is it going to be? When was this going to be started? When do you plan to start this project? When do you plan to finish this project? And if there isn't a plan, why not just take responsibility for that? Since this is funded through property taxes, it's going to raise our taxes, which is what is now being said. I don't know if that's true, but that's what's being said. Why is it such a problem for the citizens to be involved in the conversation and in the process? Lastly, and most importantly, why was this project placed on the back burner for the past five years when our police department was crumbling? Perhaps it would be a good idea to involve the voters in these decisions because if it were up to the voters that I've talked to, and I've talked to a lot of them, we would take that $1.2 million per year we put into sports complex, and we'd be giving it to our PD. And I just wanted to clarify, Councilman Eichner. When you said you can't fix stupid, I'm just wondering if you were referring to the 1,182 people that signed this petition or was it someone else? The citizens that sign this petition are squarely behind the police department. I can tell you that because I knocked on their doors and I talked to them, and I gathered nearly 250 signatures. I've talked to a lot of people. They love the PD. They want to take care of the PD. It is the, is the council that stalled the project. It is the council that placed the project. It was on the 2017, 2018 budget, was pulled off in 2019. It is not the citizens that delayed this project. It is actually council that delayed this project, and we would like that to stop right now, and we would like our police taken care of. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Puccio.
Michaela Carvahal.
Hi, I'm Michaela Carvahal. I live at 2350 Junction Highway number 1,001. I'm here on behalf of BCFS Health and Human Services, which is a local nonprofit in town. And I'm just here to bring, I guess exposure is the correct word. We have, so we work with youth in the community that are considered at risk. We have multiple programs, and so we serve kids that are ages starting from 10 up until 25. And so the program I work with specifically is YAD, and the acronym stands for Youth Adverted from Delinquency. And we have a case manager that works with those kids for an hour a week, and all of our referrals come from juvenile probation. And he gets upwards of like 35 kids on a caseload sometimes, and so it's a lot for one person to take care of. And so my position is specifically for a mentoring program. And so I'm just bringing exposure because I need more volunteers of people that are willing to mentor these kids. They haven't done anything like super crazy. The whole reason they're here is because we want to lower recidivism rates because if we lower recidivism rates, then we can make Curville better in the future. And I know that kids need a lot of support here. I'm from Curville. I'm also a former Curville ISD school teacher. And so I see some of the things that kids are going through and the things that they come from. And so the whole purpose is to just have somebody other than our case manager that's a positive role model that can kind of help keep them on the right track. So hopefully, when they age out of our program, which is 17, they don't make the same mistakes they've been making. And then Curville overall will hopefully become a better place, and we'll have less people that end up in the system. So that's all I was here to do today, just kind of make people more aware. I've done a lot of recruitment, and so just essentially to garner support. And then if there are anybody that is, is anybody that is interested, then they can contact me. And you have to go through basic things like drug testing, fingerprinting because we're working with minors and things like that. But that's all I wanted to say, so thank you.
What's the BCFS number that somebody could call?
It's, so to reach me specifically, it's 830-346-2233.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right. Okay, that's the end of.
That's the end of our citizen investors.
Right. Okay. Council, any, or staff, any remarks?
May I just speak to general timelines in regards to the Public Safety Facility? Based off council feedback, we will anticipating, bring an additional workshop topic in addition to the one that was presented earlier, unfortunately not well-attended earlier this summer. But we will be anticipating bringing that to you later this fall to be able to provide, again, the timeline updates of what has been occurring, given the space needs assessment and the other elements that have influenced that project over the last four or five years, and then also provide an opportunity for council to be able to provide direction on how we proceed with any elements that need to be brought forth to the council in advance of a decision being made on the dates for upcoming bond elections.
Okay. All right. Thank you.
Mayor and council, I would like to clarify that the petition was turned in after the last day that you could register for ballot for November 1st. It was not certified after that date. It was turned in after that date.
Okay. All right. Thank you. I would like to say just a couple of comments, then we'll move on. In regard to the issue of the CO certificate of obligation, I've listened respectfully in more than one council meeting, which I should, to the Let Us Vote group. And, and also in my op-ed in the paper in regard to the Public Safety Complex, I defended the Let Us Vote group because I said there were some who were saying, there were some who were saying that the Let Us Vote group was against the police and fire. I said, I do not believe that. Then, when it was clear in council meeting that the petition had been certified and the CO would not go further, I expressed my disappointment, but I made it very clear that what had happened in regard to the Let Us Vote group was clearly the democratic process. Citizens have an option to petition in that way, which they did. And so anyway, I wanted to clarify that. Okay. Consent agenda. Ms. McLennan, would you read that in for us?
3A, purchase and installation of a shade structure for the Carver Park Playground from Craftsman Commercial Playgrounds and Water Parks in the amount of $77,425. 3B, minutes for the city council workshop held August 24th, 2021. And 3C, minutes for the city council meeting held August 24th, 2021. There are no citizens that wanted to pull an item.
All right. Okay. Do I have a motion in regard to the consent agenda?
I'll make a motion that we accept the consent agenda as presented.
Okay. All right. Second, second. Okay. All in favor, if you'll let me know by the raised hand? Okay. It passes unanimously. Okay. The city's ongoing preparation for COVID-19. Chief Eric Maloney from the Fire Department will give us an update.
Mayor and council, I'll give you a brief update on the COVID response since our last council meeting about three weeks ago. One of the things we're currently seeing as of today, the active cases are at 230, 236. One of the things to note is I do believe this number is going to be low. KISD is reporting 174 active cases as of today. There are 107 deaths that are recorded and over 5,400 are recovered. Hospitalization is, once again, is the primary concern when we talk about the COVID and we talk about the predominant Delta variant, and that is they are at 34 hospitalized. They were at a peak on September 3rd of 43 hospitalized. And if you'll remember the conversation back in early August was that in their 20s, they were taxed. They were at the maximum where they could manage in their 20s. And since then, we have not come back down into the 20s and actually progressed up as high as in the 40s. So the hospital is still stressed with their management of the COVID. And remember, this is a ripple effect that this has on the community, on the citizens of not just being treated for COVID, but being treated for any other serious medical condition. And that is not just Curville, that is across the region, across the state. We'll see the COVID cases since June 24th. I like the June. Obviously, the numbers are low. The hospitalizations is very manageable. And you can see it's consistently kind of seen the trend or the surge over that. This is consistent across the region, and we're continuing to monitor that with our South Texas Regional Advisory Council in San Antonio. And you can see this surge is a little different, although maybe it didn't peak as high as it did back in January, but it is flattened at a higher number than before. And also, I think some of those numbers are going to be a little lower this time because there is over-the-counter testing available that you can report, of course. Then again, you could opt out not to report. So I believe that number is going to be higher. Local update, per the DSHS website, took a look at that today. So Kirk County residents, so it is a few percentage more than my last report out. So we're at 46% of eligible residents are fully vaccinated. Texas residents, the average is 59%, so we are consistently about 13 points behind. 65 and plus, 62% are fully vaccinated, and in Texas residents, almost 78%. Vaccinations by age, a 12 to 15-year-old, the last time reported out was at 300. So it went up about 127 in that age group. Remember, that age group is still under the Pfizer Emergency Youth Authorization, and so 427 out of the 2,300 eligible. And then the other groups have also increased accordingly. So meetings and collaborations. So we had a community leadership meeting on Thursday, September 2nd. That includes city, county, the ISDs were all present there at Peterson Regional. So this is an opportunity for the leadership to kind of get together, talk about what's happening across the board from a Kirk County perspective instead of one individual agency or a silo. And so we really share some great information for that. Our next meeting is this Thursday, September 16th, and currently, we do not have a community update. The Zoom is to be determined, probably be the following one that we have in probably about three, another two weeks from now. Vaccine update. So this has not changed. So the Pfizer is under full FDA approval, so that was on August 23rd for 16-plus. The 12 to 15, as I mentioned, is still under Emergency Youth Authorization. That's a two-dose vaccine. The Moderna is still under the Emergency Youth Authorization, so they're in the Phase III study trials and with anticipation, probably within a month of getting that FDA approval. And Johnson &amp; Johnson is still under the Emergency Youth Authorization, but they're probably anticipated, probably another three to four months down the road based on the phases they're in. So what's availability in Curville? This was some information provided. Didn't have the testing information last time since then, I believe we have shared that, which is helpful. And so I'll share that here briefly for that. But all the local pharmacies in town can provide a vaccine. So HEB, one of the primary, they do have the Pfizer, the Moderna, and then the Johnson &amp; Johnson is HEB, the number one, the main one there. So they have their times available. We're trying to get this information posted. Testing at the pharmacies for HEB is they only have the at home test. They have one called a quick view and the other one's called the buy next now. Buy next now is the one that will be used at the Fire Department and Public Safety with the Police Department. Walgreens offers the vaccine to Pfizer only at this time. Times has posted, testing, they do provide that, but you have to schedule with the pharmacy. They do not allow walk-ins and you can register online at walgreens.com. Walmart, so their vaccine, so they have transitioned to the Pfizer vaccine as their primary. They still have the Moderna available. So if you receive the first dose to the Moderna, they do have that waiting for you for the second dose. Times has posted. Testing, once again, they only do the at home test, a buy next now. That's limited supply, so they're as they're on the shelf or off the shelf about as fast. CVS has the Moderna vaccine, so they have not mentioned about transitioning to the Pfizer. Times has posted. Once again, they'll do the testing, but it does have to be scheduled with the pharmacy. No walk-ins and they can register online at CVS.com. Peterson Urgent Care, these are the last two. Peterson Urgent Care, they do not have the vaccine available for a walk-in or a schedule. They do the testing currently. Walk-ins are welcome. So there are seven days a week that that is available out there. So, and then the Franklin Clinic also does not have the vaccine available, but they do have the testing, walk-ins. You can schedule online at Franklin Clinic, Kerrville.com or call for an appointment. That's Monday through Friday, but 12 hours a day. So what do we know right now? So COVID-19 has not changed, still a public health threat. So still somewhere continued to manage out there. One of the reasons that we've had is that our communication with Peterson Regional is they've been asking us to continue to help and kind of get the information out there, help flatten the curve. They are stressed at 34 is where they're at. High is 43. That puts a lot of stress on the hospital system, a lot of stress on our only hospital in Kirk County. So I mentioned that. They also have some great information available at PetersonHealth.com/COVID-19-News. They have news and information on there. General COVID-19 questions, vaccine specific questions, vaccine and pregnancy questions, after vaccine questions, and links to the Department of State Health Services, the CDC and the FDA. So really encourage the citizens and everyone that if you're looking for information about COVID, to please go to the website at Peterson.com. So before calling in for information on that. So they have most of their questions. If a question comes in that they don't have an answer for, they're trying to get that posted on there and keep that as fresh as possible. And of course, as I always said, the Department of State Health Services, a great information there. They have most of your major links to the CDC and FDA and all the other information you need for a statewide response there. And with that, any questions or comments?
All right, counsel.
Are the elementary schools, I think my understanding, if that's correct, is that most of the cases are in the high school? Do our, do our elementaries, are they having some?
They are at the elementary schools. I saw that earlier today, it's posted on the website, is where the Kerrville Independent School District is posting it, but the majority were at the high school. Definitely, I noted that because my son's in high school.
Gee, our high, we get daily updates. Our high was over, not this past weekend, but maybe the weekend before, at our elementary school that my son attends was 13. They are reporting at least one. I've not gotten gone without a day without, without an email yet for at least one.
Yeah, and they're reporting the daily totals for each school, elementary all the way through.
Yeah, Councilman Eichner on that. So the high school had 61 active cases. This is as of this morning. The middle school had 25. BT Wilson had 34. And then the other four elementary schools, basically 50 is what they had between, about 10 apiece.
The, as, does a hospital set up a pediatric COVID unit?
They do not provide direct care for pediatric. It's not a pediatric hospital here. So they can provide acute care for those, but most of the pediatric will be transported out to a more appropriate hospital. So Children's Hospital in San Antonio or as far as Houston, it kind of depends on the availability.
Okay, all right. Okay.
Do you have any information on children that have had to be hospitalized for COVID?
In regards to the ages?
Just under the age of 18?
I have not. I think the last one I saw from Peterson was one that was 17. And of course, that's, that's one that kind of resonates when you have a 16 year old. So.
So.
But I haven't seen any others as far as a hospitalization, but I can get some information for that. I could ask Peterson Regional.
Okay, thank you.
For more.
How does President Biden's requirement for vaccines or at least testing for employers with over, I think it was 100 or more than 100 employees, how does that affect our city?
So as of right now, we're kind of waiting on more direction with that. So that's going to be with the federal kind of task force that they're working with the federal employees. Now you want to do a contract business with the federal. Also, under OSHA, they're taking a look at, under OSHA is where that directly falls. And so how that relates to the city of Kerrville, we'll have to wait and see kind of what the ruling is on that.
Okay.
But we're watching that closely.
All right, thank you. All right. Thank you very much, Chief. Appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you.
Yeah, thank you. Ms. McLennan, would you read in 5A?
Resolution number 40-2021, a resolution granting a conditional use permit to authorize a short term rental unit on the property comprising Lot 1 and part of Lot 2, Block 17, Weston Place Edition, more commonly known as 414 West Water. Said property is located within a single family residential zoning district R1 and making said permit subject to certain conditions and restrictions contained herein. There is one citizen speaker signed up, however, this is a public hearing.
Everly?
This is a public hearing?
Yeah, sure. Okay. Mr. Paxton?
Thank you, Mayor and Council. This is a request for a short term rental unit at 414. I've had a, our GIS, or excuse me, our planning intern has put together a GIS map of the short term rental units that we have registered and paying that occupancy tax through our finance department. Approximately 60 units, 13 of those have been with conditional use permits and three pending discussion tonight. So the three pending you see are blue. The short, the conditional use permits are the red and the grandfathered ones are in that green color. As you can see, we do have some outside the city limits as well.
This is the exact same map that was brought to P&amp;Z, right?
That's correct.
Okay.
Here's a map of this project. There is one across, roughly across the street and then another existing unit a few blocks away. Here's the site plan of the property. They do have adequate parking as per the resolution with the garage and the driveway. And these are the standard conditions. Planning Commission and staff did not recognize any outstanding circumstances that needed any additional conditions covering the guest notification, requirement to pay occupancy taxes, any signage should they choose to put signs on the property, minimum parking requirements and maximum occupancy. And on August 5th, Planning and Zoning Commission approved it. And I'd be pleased to answer any questions before or after the public hearing.
All right. In terms of sending out the letters, what was the result?
Yes, we did send out our standard letters within 200 feet. There are two letters in your backup for this one in support of this project. There were a handful of speakers at the Planning Commission in support of the project.
Okay, all right. Okay. Counsel, any questions? And, go ahead. Any comments?
On, on the second page of the agenda bill, and it says, under the parking section, says that the applicant has not identified the location of the required off-street parking space. And it says it for all three of the agenda bills, for all three of the COPs that we have in front of us. So is that still the case or?
No, I believe I have a typo in all three of these because these are not all one bedroom, one bedroom units. They did identify during the public hearing at Planning Commission. The garage will be utilized as parking and driveway.
Okay, so just a typo?
Yes.
Okay, I just wanted to know if I missed anything because I saw the parking spaces and I was a little confused there.
That's correct. One of the things we're going to start working with our applicants is to identify on the site plan, the number of parking spaces provided as well.
Okay.
All right. Any other questions? Okay. Open the public hearing if there's somebody who wants to speak to this matter.
Russell Nimke?
I think there's somebody else. Ma'am, did you want to speak?
Okay.
My name is Martha Hicks. I live in Blue Bell Hills at 922 Cypress. I'm here in support of Sarah Lewis and her husband Greg in their bid for approval of this Airbnb. In early 2019, Katie Popple recruited Sarah and I to revive the Blue Bell Hills Bike Parade. I got all the credit, they did all the work. Thus started the cavalcade of disagreements between me and the young woman Sarah Lewis. You'd think I'd be here tonight to trash her character, absolutely not. Sarah is full of good ideas. Before becoming CEO in charge of two darling daughters, Olivia and Parker, and wife to a Kerrville native son, husband, Sarah excelled in advertising. She must do well as a daughter in law because the in-laws, Dr. Charles Lewis and wife Patty, are often with Sarah and Greg. The thing is, the Lewis's are here to stay and they're good people. That's not why I'm here. When Sarah first mentioned the Airbnb, I was delighted. Here's a place I can rent when my adult grandchildren come to town. I know it will be as advertised as expected and like the owners, a credit to the city of Kerrville. But in closing, I would like to say thank you to each of you, no matter what your agenda. Thank you for public service. Oftentimes, would, you know, no matter what you, where you stand on any issue, thank you for your needs.
Okay, thank you, Ms. Hicks.
Ms. Hicks, you signed up for 5C. Did you still want to?
I was close to 5A.
Okay, thank you.
All right. Any, any further discussion on this matter?
I think it will be a.
I want to just say I need to close the public hearing if we don't have any other speakers. Okay, public hearing is closed.
I think this will be a, a nice addition to, as an Airbnb.
All right. Okay. Counsel, anything else? Okay, I'm going to recuse myself on this one, but all in favor, if you'd let me know by the raised hands?
I move to.
Yeah, we, yeah, why don't we have a motion?
I move to approve resolution number 40-2021.
I'll second that.
All right. Okay, all in favor, if you'd raise the hands?
Yeah. And, and just to clarify, I'm pretty sure our rules state that all council members have to vote.
Not if there's a conflict of interest.
No, no, if, if there's, I'll, I'll give it to the, to the attorney. My personal knowledge of this family is I've known Greg since he's five years old. I married this couple and I prayed over their very early.
Bill, this is actually a lawsuit.
What? This is yours? Sorry, okay, well, I'll recuse myself on that vote then. All right, sorry about that. Anyway, so I had a lot of personal connections there. Okay. But there is a possibility of recusing on a vote like this, correct?
You can recuse yourself if you have a, a legal conflict of interest. And I leave that up to individual council members to decide.
Okay, okay.
So if he recuses himself, he has to recuse himself from presiding officer as well.
Well, he, he has to recuse himself from the vote, for sure. And he did that. I, I don't have a problem with the way he handled that, really. He told you, I assume he'll, he'll tell us what the conflict is later, but.
Yeah.
Unless you want to make a deal.
I felt, I felt like it was, it was clear and important.
Okay.
If I understood that this is the Lewis's, now I understand it's not. Okay, all in favor?
Will you be voting on this one, sir?
Do I?
Will you be voting on 5A?
On 5A, yes.
Yes, okay. So I do have four votes.
Got a fifth? Okay. And I reserve the right to recuse myself on another one. Okay. All right, 5B?
Yes, sir. Resolution number 41-2021, a resolution granting a conditional use permit to authorize a short term rental unit on the property comprising part of Lot 11, Block 2, Fairview Edition, and more commonly known as 604 East Shady. Said property is located within a single family residential zoning district R1 and making said permit subject to certain conditions and restrictions contained herein. There are no citizen speakers signed up, however, it is a public hearing.
Okay, all right. Mr. Paxton?
Thank you. Again, this is a conditional use permit request for a short term rental, 604 East Shady. Again, here's that same map. One zoomed in showing on the upper left-hand side is this property. There are four more along Guadalupe Street and four at Starkey Street and Lowry Street within this neighborhood. Also, there is a trailhead in the adjacent C2 downtown as identified on those previous five conditional use permits with Planning and Zoning Commission.
All right. Okay. If, if there are no speakers?
One, one more, sorry. This one they did not.
Oh, you got another slide, okay.
This project, they did not specifically identify where they were going to provide the additional parking spaces. There are two current parking spaces. They will be required in additional two parking spaces based on the bedroom count. And staff will work with the applicant prior to them going forward with using this as an Airbnb to make sure that construction is completed.
All right, okay.
Drew, why, why are we, why do we wait on the parking? Since that's something that is supposed to be there when, when the process starts? I mean, the, the parking is there. I drove past. It's all there, but, but why is it not all here?
The standard parking requirement for a single family home is two parking spaces.
Right.
The short term rental requires additional parking because it is short term rental of one per bedroom and one per the off-site manager. So in this case, this property would be required for parking spaces. Many of the applicants don't want to go to the expense of adding the additional concrete or additional parking to the project if they're not approved. So they wait till they have final approval before they install those parking spaces.
Okay, okay, that makes sense. But at least we would know that there, that it could, it could happen. There would be enough there.
And looking at the site plan here, the survey here, you can see there is ample room for those additional spaces. That's correct.
Okay. But they're not necessarily required to put in any specific type of driveway?
That's correct. It could either be crushed granite, as long as it's stabilized and can fit the parking spaces, asphalt, concrete, any of those acceptable under the zoning.
It just can't be on the grass?
That's correct.
Okay.
All right, counsel, anything else? Okay, public hearing is open. Public hearing is closed. And I want a clarification, is this the Lewis property? No, the next one is. All right, okay. Okay, do I hear a motion on this matter?
I move that we approve resolution number 41-2021. I'll second that.
All right, you got a motion, second?
Just one question. Does the applicant have a deadline to meet that requirement of parking, assuming we pass it tonight? Do they have a deadline to do that?
That they are required to install that parking prior to operating as a short term rental.
Okay. All in favor of this motion, let me know by the raised hand? All right, thank you.
A resolution, resolution number 42-2021, a resolution granting a conditional use permit to authorize a short term rental unit on the property comprising part of Lot 4, Block 81.
81 J Atavie Edition, and more commonly known as 120 Aransas. Said property is located within a single-family residential with accessory dwelling unit zoning district R1A, and making said permit subject to certain conditions and restrictions contained herein. There are two citizen speakers signed up, however, this is a public hearing.
All right.
Is this the one with the conflict of interest?
Uh, potentially.
Okay.
Okay. Counsel, comment your questions? Drew?
Just wanted to show you the map real quick. Again, this is the citywide. There are none within a few blocks of this property. There was one, I guess about five or six blocks away, approved a conditional use permit. They do have ample parking provided on this project, and the conditions are the standard conditions. We'd be pleased to answer any questions before or after the public hearing.
Okay. Counsel? All right. Public hearing is open.
Russell Nimke.
Hello, my name is Russell Nimke. I live at 501-5 Elm Street. I believe the only two speakers for this are both in favor because I think the other one is Mrs. Martha Hicks, but she went a little early. That's partly my fault up front. But I just wanted to say that I'm for all these CUPs, such like y'all approved. I think we always reserve the right with Drew, might say this too. I don't know where he went, there he is. But we can always revoke them in the, in the future if they have problems at the sites. So I'm for all these. This was the only one at P&amp;Z that had some contention about it, is why I signed up, and I wanted to be in favor for it, and I support the Lewis's just like Martha does. And out of all of the three of them, I don't want to make my Barker friends mad at me, but I think this is actually the most appropriate one, in my opinion. But I wish them all luck. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, anybody else to speak to this?
Ms. Hicks, would you like to speak again? Okay.
Yeah. All right.
Do you need to speak?
My name is Greg Lewis. I'm the owner of the, of the house. Currently, I live at 705 Overhill Drive. You know, I, I just wanted to kind of speak to why it's a good property. It's, it's the only driveway access on that road, so there won't be any through traffic. We've installed a privacy fence, we've installed security cameras that monitor noise and activities there. It's 288 square feet, so it's, it's a tiny house. So the max occupancy will be two people. You know, personally, my target audience is, I work with Peterson, so I'm going to try to get traveling nurses, traveling therapists, people that are on contracts for six weeks. Our neighbor to the east, Tate, already has two nurses in San Antonio that commute to Kerrville to work, and, and I've already offered to have them stay a couple of nights there. So that's kind of what our goal for this, this short-term rental is, is yes, people wanting to Hill Country getaway, but also for, you know, healthcare workers, and especially right now, I think it's important to have some, some affordable housing for them. Yeah, that's it.
Thank you.
You did a very nice job with that lot.
Yes, you did.
Looks very nice. Thank you.
All right, anybody else in this public hearing? If not, public hearing is closed. Do I hear a motion on this matter?
I'd just like to make something clear first, and I guess we can call it a point of order if you want, but our city charter says that no member of the council may be excused from voting except when such member has a conflict of interest as defined by law. So the only excuse for not voting would be to a conflict of interest defined by law. Our ethics policy also says that once the disclosure is made, the city officials shall leave the meeting to ensure that their presence does not hinder the discussion of the item or influence the vote. So just respectfully, Mayor, if there was a conflict of interest, the recuse of.
There's, there's not a financial or legal conflict. I just wanted to be open, given the multiple contacts and relationships I have with this family. Okay, do we have a motion?
I'll move that we adopt resolution number 42-2021.
All right, second?
Second.
Okay, we got a motion, second. All in favor, if you'd raise your right hand? All right. And any opposed? No, no, I'm not voting. Okay, let's look at 6A. Ms. McLannan, if you'll read that in for us.
Ordinance number 2021-24, an ordinance adopting the City of Kerrville, Texas subdivision code, a comprehensive rewrite of the city's subdivision regulations, said rewrite to be known as the City of Kerrville, Texas subdivision code, and found within Chapter 82 of the city's Code of Ordinances, repealing all ordinances or part-of-ordinances inconsistent therewith, providing an effective date, and providing other matters related to this subject. There are no citizen speakers signed up, however, it is a public hearing.
Mayor, before we get started, I'd just like to quickly, before you turn it over to Mr. Paxton, just want to commend the Code Review Committee. This was a multi-month, and in fact, a multi-year effort because of some delays because of COVID, but they went through a very extensive review, which Mr. Paxton will go over the, the history of that. But we had a group of citizen volunteers that were heavily involved in really drafting this ordinance and organically bringing these recommendations and helping the drafting of this, that then went into further subsequent review by our planning and zoning folks, and now is before you. So just big kudos to that Code Review Committee for, for all their hard work in going through this, and then certainly planning and zoning as well.
All right.
Thank you, Ms. Hoppy, thank you, Mayor. As we've heard several staff members and a lot of our development community say, development is not an exact science. For a lot of the larger projects, they may begin with the subdivision of raw land, and that's what this section of the code deals with. Now, this section is very technical, and it does get into the, the technical aspects of the layout of parcels, streets, water, wastewater, and other utilities. And the last minor update to the subdivision ordinance was 2008. I believe the update before that was 2003. There's not been a substantial update to this code that I'm aware of since its initiation. Overall, there are no significant changes to the process. However, there are some small changes to the process and procedures of reviewing plats based on some legislative changes from the 2019 legislature. Additionally, Kerrville 2050 promoted several different ordinances and codes for review and update to make sure that they are consistent and comply with the goals and objectives of the community. As Mr. Hoppy alluded to, this is a long process. We started with staff working with consultants to review the current ordinance, identify any recommended updates. Code Review Committee started in October of 2019. Obviously, we had some delay with the onset of COVID, and continued working through 2020 and completed in 2021 in May. June, we took the draft to a workshop with the Planning and Zoning Commission, back to the Planning, Planning and Zoning Commission in July, had a workshop with city council in August, and of course, here we are for our first reading. Couple of action items, just the overall review of the code, check several action items off in the Kerrville 2050 Plan, all alluding to the review of codes and ordinances to make sure those development codes specifically are keeping in with Kerrville 2050 goals and objectives. 2019 legislature provided some changes for cities across the state and how we process plats and subdivision reviews, primarily making sure that there is a strict timeline for each step of the, that process. They introduced a mandatory shot clock for any type of plat, subdivision plan, or anything related to those of 30-day timeline. Our, while our current ordinance references a 30-day timeline, it is not as strict as the state rules. Some procedures in the 2019 legislative changes are not spoken to in our current ordinance, and then, of course, a regular review of those subdivision standards was needed. So the general provisions, the first article of the chapter, primarily established from the existing ordinance, as the primary basis of subdivisions has not changed, establishes the authority and establishes the exclusions and exemptions within the code, along with updated some definitions. One of the key changes that we've made in this draft is that the, a lease does not require a separate platted lot. That's, has not been consistently applied through Kerrville from a utility and infrastructure standpoint. There's no large benefit to the city and to the citizens. If the development or the developer chose to do that, they still can, but it is not a requirement. We've also removed one of the current exemptions for the conveyance of land between adjacent property owners. The more we dug into this exemption, the more it was recognized that any existing platted lot, if those are further subdivided, that should be done through the replat process, so the deeds now match the legal descriptions that are recorded with that plat at the courthouse. One of the changes that we've added, based on the 2019 legislative action, is adding the adequate facilities plan as one of the stages of the process. Essentially, that's a conceptual utility layout. That's when the developer is first starting the concept of the development, showing where water, wastewater, electric, and any other utilities are going to connect. They could start the conversation with, with those utility companies or city staff to make sure there is adequate capacity. Currently, that is done during the preliminary plat process, but now that the utility piece is added to that strict 30-day timeline, we have separated that as a separate step. With this process, no simultaneous submittals will be allowed, and the sequence must be followed for each of those projects. Pre-development discussion with planning staff is a typical part of our process. A lot of developers do come in before they submit a plat, show their concept, make sure that they're in line with our policies and codes, before they spend a lot of effort designing that subdivision. They also have the option of going through our design review committee under a preliminary site plan that formally gets sent out to all city staff departments and all of our local utility companies for review. They give preliminary feedback, so they can then further their design, knowing that they've had at least a first draft run through staff. And then the code does require some pre-application conference where we can go through an application checklist, we can go through what other parts of that application will be required, depending upon the stage of that submittal.
Now, Drew, that's, that's all done without any fees?
That's correct. Yes, so these are different variations of that pre-application conference and different levels of submittal from the applicant. Obviously, the more advanced the project is and its design, the better the feedback the applicant receives, but this is consistent with what we do now. It's more formalized in the, in the new update to the code. Again, we go over that completeness checklist. If there are any pre-application requirements, we make sure those are well-established and defined, and if there was any previous conditional approval, we make sure that those have been checked off and approved. Again, each, each of these stages is subject to that 30-day shot clock. If no action has been taken, the plat or the plan is deemed approved after the shot clock. And keep in mind, the plats, most of the plats are going to go to the Planning and Zoning Commission for approval. Planning Commission meets once a month, so we've structured our submittal dates to make sure that's within 30 days of each of the Planning and Zoning Commission meetings. We do, we have codified an alternative procedure, and that, the goal there, as discussed with the Code Review Committee, was to allow projects to actually overlap some of those stages of, of the plating process, similar to the way we do now. If it's a smaller infill project, we're familiar with the capacity of the utilities, they can overlap that utility analysis with the preliminary plat. Or if it's a minimal infrastructure installation, they can overlap the civil design and civil infrastructure plans with the final plat. It is not a waiver of the shot clock requirements, but those key projects where we see it would benefit the, the project, they could start to overlap those as they elect that initially upfront. We don't want to start adding data to the application once it's been submitted, and that tends to extend the review rather than expedite the review. The adequate facilities plan, again, this is really a conceptual layout of the utilities. It's currently a requirement now, however, it is not a separate stage of the process. As we kind of walked through that with the Code Review Committee and the development partners in our community, they recognize that while there is some projects, this would be a big benefit, there is the opportunity to combine those with a preliminary plat if needed. There are no significant changes to the procedures for the preliminary plat, so this, this chapter or this section is largely pulled from the current ordinance. With the construction plans or the civil infrastructure design, one of the things that we've practiced for a long time but has never been codified, the approval of the construction plan shall also serve as the capacity reservation for that utility. So for example, if you have a subdivision and there is limited capacity on a water or sewer line that they're connecting to, once those plans, those engineering plans are approved, that capacity is reserved for a certain period of time as they continue to develop their project. State law only requires the city to reserve capacity for platted lots. So we're actually moving that earlier through the process so the development community is sure that they have capacity when they get to the finish line and start developing their project. One of the other changes that we've had is the timing of public improvements versus the approval of the final plat. So it's still a two-step process, but the final plat approval would be contingent upon the construction plan approval. If those construction plans for the civil infrastructure have not been approved, they cannot submit for their final plat. However, the final plat recordation at the courthouse is only contingent upon the installation of the, of that infrastructure. Current code, they cannot go to the Planning Commission with the final plat until all utilities have been installed. So now we've kind of broken that into two steps. They can get their final plat approval, then go install the infrastructure, and then the plat is finally recorded once that infrastructure has been completed. And they do have the option to provide financial guarantee for that, like we currently operate today. The recording of the final plat will actually be done by the planning department rather than the applicant. Since we are holding that recordation for the utility completion, staff will take that step and record those plats at the courthouse. One of the kind of expanded requirements is the proof of ownership for the plat. The owner must sign the plat as per state law. We're just expanding how the applicant proves that they are the owner. So that's either through a title commitment, a title attorney that is drafted, certified that they've done the title research, or some other format that would be acceptable through staff and the applicant. Kirk had records, copies of existing deeds are not quite adequate to show who owns it today, and is that person authorized to sign this plat? I've had quite a bit of discussion about waivers of the subdivision code. So a minor waiver is a waiver that's a minor adjustment to a street and alley alignment, adjustments in lot lines that do not create additional lots or non-conforming lots. A major waiver is anything beyond that, and so if they're actually changing some of the criteria within the subdivision code, a major waiver is required to go to city council. That waiver would be required to be approved by city council prior to the application of that phase of that project.
Do you know where in the code it says that? Because I tried looking for it, and I might have missed over it several times, but I couldn't find it.
Don't have that in front of me right away, I can get that for you.
Okay.
Some of the policy discussions that the Code Review Committee tackled, most of these stemming from comments or action items in the Kerrville 2050 Plan, looked at requirements for private streets, requirements for a traffic impact analysis, or TIA, how stormwater management would be handled, at least from the subdivision code perspective, and requirements for sidewalks. So one of the action items in the 2050 Plan, C 7.1, was develop, update, and implement a plan that includes accommodations for alternate types of travel to connect gateway-based neighborhoods and corridors, and river and other destinations. One of the key takeaways there was that connectivity between neighborhoods and other destinations. Private street developments, especially if they become a gated development, can actually impede some of that neighborhood connectivity. So the Code Review Committee wanted to incorporate a minimum set of requirements within the code that a private street subdivision must meet to be approved. If that subdivision cannot meet those requirements, they can come to council for a waiver, that waiver specifically. That waiver specifically requires a supermajority vote. The traffic impact analysis, or again, TIA, the goal here was to really create a clear and simple requirement for when a TIA is required. So any new subdivision or any infill plat is required to submit a TIA worksheet. And that's, here's an example here. This does not require an engineer to fill out. The applicant can fill this out themselves based on what their development project is, based on the acreage, the number of units, et cetera. If they meet a certain threshold, then a TIA would be required for that next phase of the project, and then they'd have to hire a traffic engineer to complete that analysis. But that way, it's clear up front and early to know when that requirement kicks in. Additionally, if on-street parking is requested in a commercial area, or if a traffic light is requested as part of that development project, a TIA would be required. Talking about the stormwater management piece, generally speaking, the subdivision code is not the best place to handle stormwater management because subdivision code is looking at strictly subdividing property, whereas other development codes may be existing platted lots that may be exempt from plating, and as we know, stormwater has impacted them more than just the subdivision of land. But at least to acknowledge that, kind of left it as an open placeholder and reference for other codes, that new subdivisions near the Guadalupe and creeks are encouraged to follow best practices for stormwater design. We're going to continue working with our community partners to establish what are good stormwater design guidelines for Kerrville, for our creeks, and for our river. As those get incorporated into guidelines or standards, it should be a separate section of the code rather than the subdivision code, and we can cross-reference that here at that Looking at sidewalks, there were several different quotes and comments from the public engagement through the Kerrville 2050 process. Additionally, there were about 10 or 12 action items that at least were related to sidewalks within the implementation plan. Some of the takeaway goals were to provide pedestrian-friendly connections, reduce and eliminate gaps in sidewalks, provide alternate transportation options, uniformity throughout a subdivision as related to sidewalks, connect to adjacent neighborhoods, and improve pedestrian connectivity around schools. The Code Review Committee was looking to try to figure out a way to, again, reduce those number of waivers, reduce the number of exemptions in the code, and really looking at the timing of the construction of those sidewalks. So where they landed was that the sidewalk should be built with the street for residential projects, rather than delay that to the actual building permit of each individual home. So now the developer of the neighborhood, when they're building the water lines, the sewer lines, the streets, the sidewalks will be included along with that. Commercial projects, it'll be, the sidewalks will be required with the start of any part of that project, and the sidewalks be required for the entirety of the project regardless of any phasing of that non-residential project. We do recognize that the master plan and sidewalk ordinance also need to be reviewed and updated following this discussion. And that's it, in a very brief, quick description. Please answer any questions.
All right, council, do you have questions?
Just to clarify, the waiver for now, the sidewalk, is now a supermajority?
Yes. Thank you. Reduction in waivers, the Code Review Committee themselves, was a split decision on simple majority or supermajority. The council did request that that goes to a supermajority to really reinforce the fact that a waiver is the exception, not the rule.
I just have a question about the traffic impact analysis and the fact that it's being done by the applicant.
So the worksheet can be filled out by the applicant.
Okay.
That way, they're not required to hire an engineer at this stage, because there is no engineering involved at this point. The ratios and the traffic counts that come out of this worksheet are actually based on an international traffic manual that is kind of the standard for traffic engineering. So you could go through and look and see a restaurant of a certain size, based on its location, will have X number of trips per hour, X number of peak hour trips in the morning, in the evening, in the weekend. It's just filling out a chart. If that peak hour threshold exceeds 100, can't quite read it on here, if it exceeds...
But there's a formula that is used, and not just somebody filling out something to...
That's correct. Yes, yeah, it's a formula. The city will have that manual available to the public so that they can go through and fill out this worksheet. If it exceeds a certain threshold, then they'll need to hire an engineer to do the full analysis, not just...
Okay, but they don't have the ability to deliberately keep the numbers low so they don't have to pay for, you know, a traffic engineer to come in and do?
No, because it would be based on what their proposed development is, and this will be checked at each stage of the development. So as they go through, if the project changes from preliminary plat to final plat, those numbers will, may increase, and then they could trigger a requirement later on in the phase in the project.
Okay. Drew, will you remind, going off of Councilmember Hughes, what is that resource and who produces that resource? It is not an internal city document.
That's correct. It's the Institute of Transportation Engineers, and it is their standard manual. Again, that is kind of the standard for traffic engineering and traffic counts, or traffic projections, rather.
Okay, thank you.
Okay. I want to look at...
Thank you. I want to look at two things on the wording. So on page 64, and this is under the section where it says that basically, anything in this subdivision code, any cross-reference to any of the other plans, they have to follow those. And it lists several of them. At the very end, it says "or other city plan as adopted." I would, just putting this out to council, the wording plan, you know, we have a river trail master plan, we have a, and then we have a codes where we have like the fire code. And so the current word seems to only limit it to plans, whereas if we used a more broader term like standards, it may encompass both. And that amendment would hopefully limit any disputes of the interpretation of what we can include in there. You know, it includes, it lists plans, it lists codes, it lists other type of policies. And I just want to make sure that when it says "or other city plans as adopted," city council can always adopt another plan. I don't want to make sure we can only go with a plan, it can also be a fire code or something similar.
Good.
So that was one.
Let's go with that and then come back.
Good. Any thoughts on that?
I have no issue with that. Obviously, the goal here was to capture as much as possible, that any of those codes or plans that relate to the subdivision of property. Again, the building code and fire code do have some reference to subdivision. They're not the controlling code, but some of the rules from the subdivision code relate back to those codes, or again, bicycle plan, parks plan. I think that's a good edit.
Okay. Mr. Garcia?
Thank you. And then one more that I had a look at. There are, so looking at a couple of pages, actually, so just starting on page 46, it looks at where a replat requires an affirmative vote of at least three-fourths of the members present at the commission hearing. And now, just keeping that in mind, when we talk about votes for the city council, it says a three-fourths vote of the entire council for approval. So I'm looking at, there's a difference there. When the commission has it, it's a three-fourths of those present. For the council, it's looking like it says three-fourths of the entire council. So we can have three members of council here, and if three-fourths of all five of us don't approve it, it doesn't get put forth. I would look at changing it to say three-fourths, or a supermajority vote of the members present at the council hearing, or a three-fourths vote of the council present, and council members present and voting, something like, to that nature. That way, it doesn't constrain us to a three-fourths vote of the entire council, it's those that are present, like the commission.
Sorry, which section are you referencing for the planning commission?
Yeah, so yes, the commission section is on 46B. It's on 4B. At the very last line, very last two lines, it says that.
Mr. Hayes, any comment on that?
I just want to make sure I understand. Are you asking to change the language in 4B or go into the language?
The language of council.
I don't think you can change the language on council because that's in the charter with respect to your votes. Now, if you want to change this and make it aligned with what's applicable to council...
Can you expand on that? What do you mean? Because what I'm looking at is, so a three-fourths majority is what, four out of the five of us?
Right.
So if we only had, a quorum is three. So if only three of us were at a council meeting to approve it, we can't approve it because we don't have four of the five of us. Because with the current wording, it looks like it says a vote of the entire council. So if you're going to encompass the entire council, that's five of us. So that now requires four votes, and if we only have three...
Let me ask you, where are you pointing to?
Sure. I'm sorry, I didn't reference those pages. So I'm looking at page 73 and 82. They have the exact same wording. Page 73 at the very top, it says it.
So the reference to council was for the private street subdivisions, the supermajority is three-fourths of the five seats. Same thing for the sidewalk waiver. Under the replat, which requires a public hearing, which also includes a waiver, the planning commission is three-fourths of the members present. Maybe we should change that to match council.
Well, and I think it's important to point out that these are different subjects, you know, the CRC, and I believe even council, when we went to the workshop, thought for private streets and sidewalks and those issues, it ought to be an upper standard. And so I think that's the difference, that's what you're seeing here.
Okay.
And council's not involved in plats. Council is involved in any time you get to those waivers of decisions about private streets.
Okay. So do you understand what I'm saying, though, with that?
I understand your question.
Does council get that? I don't know if the rest of council's fault.
Okay, Mr. Paxton?
I understand your question. I think it is intended to be a different threshold. Again, it's planning commission, just looking at a plat. It's a minor waiver, so that would not reach the threshold of city council's decision anyway. And again, P&amp;Z is a seven-member body, so that changes the dynamic as well.
Okay. So does that make sense with the rest of council?
I would have to agree with Mr. Paxton.
I'm just trying to make sure we got the intention clear.
It sounds like it's two different...
Right.
Two different groups that are looking at it.
Right. Well, because like, one way, it would be four of the five of us. Another way is, let's say one of us were absent. Let's say I'm absent. At least three of y'all have to approve it. Otherwise, with the current wording, all of y'all have to approve it, or it doesn't get passed.
Mr. Hayes, is that correct?
Well, I mean, again, there's several places in here that talk about votes, but I'll relate to this. The ZBA, for instance, in variances, has to have a supermajority vote. And so sometimes you get before the ZBA, you notice, and we have people that, do they still have five people? Maybe they're up to seven.
Five and two alternates, that's correct.
Five and two alternates. So five members are voting, and sometimes applicants will come before the ZBA for a variance and notice that they only have four members total. And so they might withdraw because they don't want to deal with the situation that they're going to have to get all four of those votes. And that's just, I mean, I don't, in my opinion, based on what the CRC has discussed, and P&amp;Z, and even council at the workshop, you all intended there to be a supermajority vote at times, a higher standard when you're waiving sidewalks and doing major waivers and discussing private streets. And I think it's, you know, I think it meets the policy that you all wanted to go through. And, you know, if you want us to relook at it, you know, for next time, I hesitate to dig into it at this moment and try to wordsmith these different sections and these different subjects, because I think it's going to take a while.
All right. Okay, if that's the case...
But that's up to, I mean, you know, that's up to council.
Yeah, on that point, respectfully, I'm not sure it would take too long. I mean, we wanted to change the supermajority vote for the sidewalk waiver, and that was an easy change of a wording. This is the exact same thing. I'm not looking to try to redo the whole code or a whole section of it, one or two lines of it, so...
Well, Mr. Garcia, I think we've got two options here. One, you can make a motion, and we'll see where that goes. The other option would be to say to city attorney and Mr. Paxton, look at this and bring it back to us.
Yeah, I'll go ahead and, will y'all look, would y'all like to look at that and bring that, some information back to us, or have y'all provide everything you think you can give us?
We can look to clarify.
Well, I'd like to clarify. What is your main point here? What section are you talking about? Everywhere that it talks about supermajority?
I think, no, actually, so I have no problem with the supermajority. It's just of the fact that it has to be the entire council, and not just those that are present. So...
So you're saying in every section, supermajority means of council members present? Is that what you're trying to say?
That's not what it means with the current wording.
No, I'm asking if that's what you're wanting. So if you're saying supermajority means if there's four people here, three out of four is the supermajority. If there's five people here, four out of five is the supermajority. Is that what...
Correct, like the commission, like the P&amp;Z had.
So you are asking to change what the meaning of supermajority is?
No, the meaning of supermajority stays the same, no matter how many council members are there. It depends on how many councilors, but it stays the same.
I understand what you're saying, but practically speaking, you're saying, rather than us always having to be four for a supermajority, you're saying based on the numbers.
Whoever's present, right. Just like a majority of the council.
I like staying with four. I mean, someone could play with that in some way or another if we try and, you know, say who's going to show up and who's going to vote in what way. I mean, I think the intent for a supermajority is four out of five. That's how I've always considered it.
Well, okay, I would say, Mr. Garcia, which do you choose? Do you want to make a motion, or shall we ask a study of this and then come back to us just for that matter?
I'll go ahead and make a motion unless staff has more information that can provide us. If you think you've provided everything you can now, I'll make a motion.
Like I said, and Mike jumped in, in my experience, a supermajority is based on the number of seats, not the number of members present. So if anything, the planning commission...
So then we need to change the planning commission section if we're going to go with that?
We could look further into that. I don't have notes in front of me as to why we chose three-fourths vote on this one.
Okay, so if council is very set on keeping three-fourths means three-fourths of the entire council member who's here, I would go ahead and move to then change on page 46, section 4B, the wording that says requires an affirmative vote of at least three-fourths of the members present at the commission hearing, I would strike members present at the, so it reads, requires an affirmative vote of at least three-fourths of the commission. And I'll also strike the word hearing.
This is a public hearing.
Do I?
This is a public hearing.
Yeah.
Okay.
Okay. Yeah, so, okay, we'll do the public hearing and come back to this.
Sure.
All right. Okay, public hearing is now open at 6:00, 7:28? Okay?
Jerry Wolf, 509 North Buckboard. I'd like to add, Mr. Paxton, how these changes to the subdivision rules would have applied to the vintage heights subdivision. It just seemed to me it was very after the fact, and all of a sudden, that thing just disintegrated. And if that, with these new rules, with that, whatever the problem was, would have been taken care of much sooner in the process for the city made a lot of commitments to
I'm not sure the change to the subdivision regulations is germane to that. That was the developer that chose not to develop that project.
Okay, all right. Okay, do we have any other speakers? Okay, public hearing is out at 7:29. Okay, then back to, any of the work from council? Then, back to, any of the work from council, then we'll go to the motion.
Yeah, I'd just like to add that in relation to what I've heard, council member Garcia is going to propose, I would...
Okay, then I'll tell you what. Let's deal with the motion, then we'll go to the further discussion of council, okay? So, address your comments regarding the motion. Go ahead.
Okay. I would just suggest that, my preference would be to go and ask Drew to see if, in fact, there is a reason that practically, historically, or other, or if this was just something that wasn't considered at all. I would hate to, I'm not willing to make a change without knowing if there's a reason or if it was just an oversight, so to speak.
Yeah, wait, I'm sorry. We don't have a second. So is there a second to Mr. Garcia's?
Well, I'll hold up.
He has to make a formal...
Yeah, I haven't made a formal motion yet.
Okay.
So I thought we were still having discussion.
I would prefer that instead of making a motion and doing that, I would prefer we ask them to take a look at it and come back with a recommendation.
Okay. So then, okay. All right, sounds good.
So...
So does anybody else have anything else on the subdivision code?
Yeah, I do. I just want to appreciate, say a word of appreciation because this has been just so much work. And when you look at the kind, the different situations you're dealing with and all the things that have to be considered, it is, it is just phenomenal, and the citizen involvement has been great. And I've heard you say, clear and simple, and I've noticed your attention to flow in terms of processes and permits and so forth. How do we make this flow better and that kind of thing? Now, I'm going to say that this doesn't look simple. In fact, it's great bedtime reading, but it is just, it helps us in so many areas. But I've got one question. On page 79, in regard to trees, says preservation, and I'm not going to, well, let me just say, preservation of natural features. Natural features include large trees, watercourses, historic spots, and similar community assets. And then it says, if considered to be of significant value to the property, neighborhood, or community, the commission may require the preservation of some or all of these natural features. What this tells me, and there's great work on this, I understand, what this tells me is that I can go around and show you fast food operations here, a craft store and a grocery store that just plowed under beautiful historic trees. But this isn't going to stop that. Now, they may come and say, okay, you know, mother, may I plow this tree under? And we'll see more trees gone. Comments?
This was a carryover from the current ordinance, so that has not been amended.
Right. But you, and I understand the tree ordinance is difficult to write, difficult to enforce. But to me, this is a real matter for the future of this city. And the preservation of natural beauty, the second item in our community vision is natural beauty. But we're going to have less and less. So, and I'm not going to vote against it, you know, but it is just, it's just a real concern to me.
I think similar to the stormwater management section within this, within regards to the subdivision code, the tree preservation ordinance, should council choose to adopt one, would be a separate ordinance, and this would really just kind of reference that connection to the plating process. This section, in my opinion, this section of the current code and carrying it into this draft was not intended to replace those kind of regulations. The board just referenced throughout the process that there is opportunity.
Well, and I don't want the paper to come out and say tomorrow that the mayor wants a tree ordinance. That's not the case. I want to find ways to protect the natural beauty. So, but I think this is great work.
Well, and Mayor, we have a citizen who sent comments. Do they need to be read into the record or...
We'll include it in the record.
Okay.
Yeah.
And I would assume that...
I would say, can I get clarification as to what that means when we say we're going to include it in the record?
Yeah. The city secretary will have that available, along with all the records of this meeting.
And since this was the first time that I saw this...
Yes.
I asked Drew before the meeting if what's on here, I need more time personally to digest, and if we can, if we can as a body choose to pass on first reading, we can choose as a body to pass on first reading with some non-material, so to speak, changes in second reading. So my question to Drew was, is there anything within this document that if we want to look at it, could it be amended in second reading? And...
To that point, I think the, looking at these first two, referencing the definition of open space, I think that's more of a clarification of that public versus private, expanding to private, public, or common ownership. The second one, referencing to street jogs, I think we could do a better job explaining that. There's two different really scenarios at play there. One is handled in the intersection subsection above, talking about the offset between streets at an intersection. Street jogs could also be kind of an abrupt lane shift, trying to avoid those scenarios, just unsafe traffic standards.
So I was talking to Drew and Stuart before, and like a street, I was, what's a street jog?
Right.
So the example that was provided to me was on Main Street by Hill Country Cafe, where all of a sudden, your lane shifts over where there's that on-street parking.
Yes.
So that would be an example of a street jog there. And then there was also the question about the offsets on the intersections being a separate item.
So we could look at some language to try to clarify how that plays with those two requirements.
So I guess my question, my first question was, this is not a material change, meaning that we can, we don't have to put off a, an approval of first reading in order to look at these clarification items if we choose to make them at second reading?
Right.
And then, on that, I guess my second question would be, based on what you're seeing, are you internally planning to look at these, or do we as council need to direct at second reading if we want to make any kind of specific clarification-type changes?
These first two, I think we need to do some, internally do some clarification.
You'll bring that back, and there'll be a new, that will be a change in the draft based on what you've seen and what you believe is a clarification piece.
Correct.
Okay.
The next two, one referring to thoroughfare and street improvements on private streets, and the one on design standards for sidewalks, unless I'm mistaken the way I read those, Mr. Strachey was agreeing with the code review committee in their direction. The next section is referring to alleys, requesting that we consider alleys to be public rather than private. Current draft requires alleys to be private. Alleys are not a typical standard in Kerrville. The way they're currently used is largely private. Staff would not support alleys to just be openly...
And this would also be a major change.
That would be a major change. And then the last one, excuse me, the next one is a street name and traffic control sign devices, just working with, really with Kerr 911 and Kerr County to create a global list of street names. That's something we're working on. So that's not a specific change to the code, but just something to go with. And then the last one is discussion of maintenance for stormwater detention, retention, and ditches and alleyways, referring to the onus on the maintenance going to an HOA or through the development itself. Each of these really are a development-based piece of the infrastructure, and so our standard would be that the development maintains those. So I think changing that to be a public maintenance piece would be a significant change.
All right. The, so what we're looking at probably is, I don't want to presume, but I mean, we'll vote on this, and you will get back to the council with recommended changes or things that need to be clarified, or things we bring up. And then we'd come back, second reading on the 28th.
That's correct.
Okay.
I think it's important to remind the council as well, no different than the zoning code process that we went through, the city and staff are committed to periodically bringing these items back to the council, because certainly, it is not a perfect code, just as the zoning code was not a perfect code. And so we are committed to bringing those back for periodic reviews, based off council input every six months or 12 months, as you see appropriate. And we'll continue to make modifications so that this remains a living document and remains relevant to Kerrville going forward.
Yeah.
Can I make a request? Anything that staff recommends as a change, can it be somehow redlined or highlighted so that we don't have to go back through the entire thing looking for those little unchanges that you insert between now and next reading? That way, if there is something that is in addition to what staff recommends, we can be prepared as well to bring in our own clarifications if desired. Is that okay? Can we do that?
Yes.
And had you seen these from Mr. Strachey before?
He and I met and discussed, discussed most of them.
Okay.
Okay. All right. Do I hear a motion on this matter?
I move to approve ordinance number 2021-24 on first reading and further instruct staff to review the comments made in Bruce Strachey's letter and the three-fourths vote of the members present of the commission and the three-fourths vote of the entire council, as indicated on pages 46, 73, and 82, and return to council with information at the second reading of this ordinance.
Is that clear to everyone? All right, all in favor, raise hand.
We need a second.
Oh, yeah. Second. Do I have a second?
I'll second that.
Okay, all right. Okay, all in favor?
I have a discussion before the vote. The only thing I would say is, I felt like maybe we came to a consensus about the supermajority of the council part, and we were just going to look at the commission part of that.
Right, they relate to each other, so I wasn't suggesting a change or that we changed But staff said that they wanted to look at that and come back to us.
I would like to see us just simply approve the ordinance, and then we have given instructions to staff to take a look at that and not have all of that as part of that.
My only reason was to make sure our instructions were clear because we said a lot.
You know, I mean, some of us trust the staff, and if they don't do what we've asked to do, then, you know, they're accountable. But I do think it is better to have a clean motion to approve, then we deal with it and we come back in second reading.
Okay.
So, now, all in, is there a second to Mr. Garcia's motion? Are you going to withdraw it?
There was a second.
There was a second.
There was a second.
There was a second. Okay, sorry, okay.
Do you want to withdraw your second?
I do want...
As of that increase and the subsequent decrease in the tax rate, and to have the same level of revenue source, you are seeing an increase in what that rate is to produce the same amount of revenue.
Does that make sense? Did I explain that correctly, Drew?
So we have more valuable property, and we're reducing the tax rate. And we have new value coming online.
Overall, individual properties, certainly, some go up, some go down.
As a total.
Right, on a total, we have an increase in value.
And I'll second that motion.
All right, we got a motion second. All in favor, raise your hand. Yeah, you're right, roll call, yeah.
Councilmember Garcia?
Yes.
Councilmember Clarkson?
Yes.
Mayor Blackburn?
Yes.
Councilmember Eichner?
Yes.
Councilmember Hughes?
Yes.
All right, we got a couple more items. 8A, Ms. McLean.
Appointments to the Kerrvalary Youth Leadership Academy, Kayla.
All right. Ms. Meiser, you'll present that to us.
Yes, sir. So during tonight's announcements, Mr. Garcia mentioned the appointments for Kayla, and I believe he was referencing what was that he sent an email to the city secretary yesterday asking, since we only have five applications, if more students are interested, would they be able to apply? The city secretary forwarded that email to me to respond, since I'm the current city liaison, and I responded with the following to Mr. Garcia. The deadline to apply for Kayla was August 27th. Kayla has a maximum number of 10 members, meaning that we can have less than 10, but not more than 10. If others did apply, the latest that council could appoint other members would be the next council meeting on September 28th, since our first meeting for Kayla is on October 14th. So I also said, with COVID decreasing in the community, I was actually pleased with only five applicants because I thought that would be a manageable number of students to keep social distance and safe when on our various tours of other buildings and departments. With that said, on August 30th, I received an email from one potential applicant's mother saying her daughter missed the deadline, and I told her that my deadline for an agenda bill had not passed so that she could submit her application. I received her application the next day. So I did take an application after the deadline. But for consideration tonight are the applications that we have received from the following students. Annalise Barton, who is in 10th grade from Tyvee High School, Maria Lara, who is in 10th grade from Tyvee High School, Elena Romero, who is in 11th grade from Laurel Springs School, which is an online homeschool, Miriam Taha, 10th grade at Tyvee High School, and Myrna Taha, 10th grade, Tyvee High School. If council would like to continue to accept applications, we could accept applications until this Friday, which is September 17th, which is the deadline for an agenda bill for the September 28th meeting, and I'm happy to answer any questions that you might have.
Let me jump in with real appreciation for this, this youth group that has served us in a lot of ways. I would really encourage us, through the Facebook page and a variety of other ways, to get the word out that we could have more students, because if you have five or six, and two can't be there, then you got just four, and they get lax something. So I would encourage us to extend till this Friday, the applications.
Yeah, I appreciate your comments, Mayor. I was going to say the same thing. We do a lot of that with our boards, other programs like the flag football and soccer programs that we have. Unfortunately, I didn't see anything go out with this one, and that would be something really good to look at doing, especially with the 2050 plan enhancing and looking at all age groups and demographics being involved. I appreciate your comment on that.
Okay, all right.
I would move that we approve the appointment of the five names that have just been read and that we extend the deadline to Friday of...
September 17th.
September 17th. Thank you.
Yes, ma'am.
We got a motion second. Let me just say, and this won't affect the voting on this motion, but in talking with students, high school students, they keep saying, we need a bowling alley, or we need a skating rink. And to me, that's so old school, but they say, we need a place to hang out and to do something and get stuff to eat. Now, the city can't do that. That's a business. But I would, there is one company right now looking at a family entertainment complex, or not, maybe that's too large, but anyway. So I hope we say something like that. But, all right, all in favor of this motion, it would be known by the right hand? All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, 8B, Ms. McLean.
Resolution number 43-2021, a resolution establishing a policy of the city council to set the city's water and wastewater fees for fiscal years 2023 through 2026 for the purpose of stabilizing revenues and encouraging water conservation. And we do have one citizen speaker signed up.
Yeah, I'm sorry, what?
We do have one citizen speaker.
Okay, all right. Okay. Katrine?
Hi, thank you. Good evening. So we're going to discuss our current rate structure and the users on our current water and wastewater plan. So we currently use a variable rate structure. That means revenues are based on a tiered scale, so the higher the consumption coming in, the more revenue that we will see. However, revenues are heavily impacted by weather elements and... However, revenues are heavily impacted by weather elements and rainfall, so keeping that in mind, that doesn't detour the overwhelmingly fixed cost on our system. So we're trying to balance those items out. So we hired on a consultant to do a rate study in 2019. They were looking at a multitude of components, our debt covenants, available cash, just current budget at the time was FY '20, water and wastewater infrastructure needs, and just many other things, the growth of our community, and what types of users we have, and how much consumption we're having to pull through the system. The findings came back, and the consultant presented to council their opinions on our current rate structure and gave us some ideas or just alternatives on what we can do to kind of stabilize our system. In 2020, we did take on some of their thoughts and implemented some new rates. However, in FY '21, we didn't do any rate changes due to the COVID pandemic. Here on this first slide here, you'll see this chart is kind of just to put out there how many users we have that are on our residential water system and what kind of category they fall into. Our average household users use approximately about 5,500 gallons a month in water. So that's close to 60% of our consumers. So what we're proposing for the FY '20, '23 through '20, '26 plan is we want to remain at a variable rate structure, but we do want to recommend to increase the base rate to help us stabilize our revenue. This base rate does include 1,000 gallons of water for residential users. These lower users can budget their monthly bills, because if they stay under that threshold, they'll just be billed the base charge, and then this strategy does protect our lower end users also from any tier rate increases. Looking at FY '22 budget, we did not do a change to the first tier, which is 1,001 gallons to 6,000 gallons, and that is our average customer, just to help offset the higher base rate increase for FY '22. That was at 5%, so it was just a little bit higher because we didn't get to capture that increase in FY '21. There are volumetric rate increases for the higher volume users, and that is really to promote water conservation, and this strategy does go in line with the Kerrville 2050 goal of keeping our water supply. There is a handout at your seat there, which is, it's a little bit different from the one that went out in your packet. We did notice a difference in our commercial and irrigation that did not go in line with our FY '22 numbers, so we've adjusted that and just put it back in line. So I actually highlighted some portion of the chart so that you can follow along with So we're looking at the proposed residential rates for '23 through '26, and this affects just the water portion. So I'm not going to go through these in detail, but the base charge does include 1,000 gallons. We are proposing a 2% increase starting in FY '23 and following through through '26. The first tier, where most of our users fall into, that will have a 1% increase starting '23 and going through through '26, and then anything in that second tier and higher will receive a 2% increase. And once again, that's staying in line with a conservative strategy to conserve water. Rolling into the commercial multi-year water plan, we're trying to keep the same methodology, so the base increase is at 2%. The first tier will receive a 1% increase, and then the second tier and up has a 2% And then on to our irrigation multi-year water plan. Irrigation is its own kind of standalone thing. It has its own rate structure. We're going to stay kind of same with the same strategy, though, 2% on the base, 1% on the first tier, and then 2% for anything higher than that. We will talk about the wastewater. So just to differentiate, residential sewer is determined using the winter months. That's industry standard. So during the months of December, January, February, we take the average of those three months and set the sewer rate for the next year to come. Those are adjusted in March, and they're reflected on our consumers' April bill. This, you know, they will not see a fluctuation in their rate due to economic times or whatnot. And then on the commercial side, for those customers, they are billed based on their true actual consumption each month. So we will look at the wastewater rate structure that we're proposing, and we kind of still want to stay in the same strategy here, 2% base increase for fiscal year '23 through '26, and then that really only has one tier. So it's based 2% on anything 1,000 gallons and up, 1,001 and up. And then commercial, same situation, 2% base increase and 2% for 1,001 plus. So what does this mean for our community and our residential folks? So in FY '22, we did give a little sample of what a new bill calculation would be. So we took the average user of 5,500 gallons. Their water-based charge was $16. The 5,500 gallons cost them $15.35. They had a sewer-based charge of $15, and then the 5,500 gallons of sewer was $25.47. So their new bill is $71.82, and that's a difference of $2.05 from the prior year's bill. Then we piggybacked off that, and just to put it out there, an example of FY '23 bill at those rates, you'll take that $16, give it a 1% increase, I'm sorry, 2% increase, and then that comes to $16.32 to your 5,500 gallons. From 15.35 to 15.48, you have your sewer-based charge went up 30 cents, and then your 5,500 gallons of sewer is 25.97. So that new bill is a total difference of $1.25 compared to last year's same bill. So we're not looking at a lot of dollars here. It's actually cents, less than 20 cents per tier that we are increasing for the years to come. So for what we're proposing for you to consider tonight is a multi-year rate plan as a resolution to go along with our water and sewer rates, just to map it out, have it laid out, so that we can provide our customers definitely with an advance notice of what the rates will be changing to each fiscal year to come. This will definitely assist us with helping project revenues so that we can do our long, long-range planning. And then we are trying to follow the 2019 rate study. They were trying to capture the service recovery, revenue stability for us, affordability to customers, making sure we're staying in line with our competitors in the region, and just water conservation for our area, because we're always, you know, looking at our water system and how to maintain that water source. So I'll take any questions you have.
Okay, thank you, Ms. Rodriguez. All right. Do I hear a motion on this matter?
I move that we adopt resolution number 43-2021.
We do have a speaker.
Yeah. You have one speaker? Yeah.
Yes, sir.
Thank you.
Jerry Wolf, I live at 509 North Buckboard. I just wanted to bring something to your attention. I think what I'm talking about is a little bit before your time, was before your time on city council, and since it's having to do with water, I think you should be aware of this. The irrigation pond, when it was proposed and the numbers were thrown out about the economics of it, and I got these numbers from Todd Parton, by the way, the city manager at the time, and I did a little bit of computing based on the numbers that he had, and at that time, the rates weren't set about how much they were selling irrigation water for, which later came about a year and a half later, if I remember correctly. Anyway, that pond, by the time you add construction costs, interest, principal and interest, the water lines, the distribution system, the pipeline system, you're looking at the city as an investment of approximately $30 million sitting out there. It generates, as you'll see in your, if you look in your fiscal year '22 budget, and if you look in past fiscal years, generates somewhere between $140,000 and $150,000 a year. I think this year's budget is a proposed $155,000 a year. The principal and interest payment per year is $1.2 million. The city loses $950,000 to $1 million a year. That's one reason tonight that you're seeing a proposal to increase the water rates. I computed back then, and these numbers probably need to be updated, but it just gives you a ballpark number, you're looking at drinking water customers are subsidizing or paying for this pond by paying additional rates. Their subsidy per drinking water customer is over $100 a year. So that gives you some order of magnitude about why water rates and sewer rates keep going up. Gary Stark, in the summer of 2016, when this issue was being debated, he kind of let the cat out of the bag and announced that there was going to be two water rate increases, I think starting in 2019 and then 2021, that's the time that he quoted, in order of magnitude of 77% each increment, those two increases. So this has been going on for a long time, about, long time, five years, about keep increasing water rates. But I just wanted to bring this to your attention, that the city loses a substantial amount of money every year on the irrigation water, and that the drinking water customers are the ones who have to make it up. Thank you.
Thank you. All right. Council, back to the motion.
We need a second.
So if I could just provide one, really quickly, related to the use of water. I think it's important, we were talking about water supply earlier, I think it's important to recognize that the use of the reused pond for irrigation purposes offsets potable water that then has to be utilized for purposes of going out onto lawns and other purposes. And so by doing that, we basically provide a supply source by that offset of about 3,000 homes worth of potable resource. So just trying to provide a little bit of background in regards to difference between water supply versus water operations, and the need for the community to continue to diversify its supply uses, which we talked about a little bit earlier.
Okay, good. Thank you. Where are we?
We do have a- We have a motion.
Yes.
You got a motion?
Yes, sir.
You got a second?
I'll second.
Ms. Hughes, okay, all right. All in favor of this matter, if you'll raise your right hand. Okay? Thank you. Passes unanimously. Do we have items for future agendas?
Mayor, I would like to get the Playhouse 2000 presentation on the agenda for the late October city council meeting, for them to give counsel an update.
Okay, all right. You got a motion, is there a second?
I'll second that.
Okay, you got a second? All in favor? All right, okay.
I would like to put on next meeting's agenda to appoint a committee to evaluate the municipal court and all of that. The deadline for that is December 31st, I believe, and so if we could, at the next meeting, appoint a committee to take care of that evaluation.
All right, okay.
Oh, okay. I didn't understand what you were asking. I do now.
Okay. A committee to do the evaluation for-
Do the evaluation.
Municipal court.
Okay.
All right. All right.
Yes.
You got a motion?
I'll second that.
Second that, all right. All in favor, let it be done by the raised hand? Okay, thank you. Anything else?
I have one more, if I could.
Yeah.
I would like for us, in the future, to take another look at the parking garage. We had set that, taken that money away from the garage, from the plans that we'd had during, when COVID came, because we felt it would be one way to help our budget, and I think it would be a good idea, I think it would be beneficial, to take another look at the garage, look at that budget, look at the plan in the near future.
Can I ask a question about that, to be reminded? We did structural improvements, correct? And did we complete those?
We went through and did a number of maintenance issues to the interior of the facility. You may recall that council had authorized and approved us to go forward and ask for EIC funds. We actually hadn't approved EIC agreement, but we did pull back on the use of those funds at that time, because we were entering a recessionary period.
So I guess my question was, at the point where I remember, so this is where I want to get clarification, the structural improvements have been done, and we were on aesthetics part?
Yes.
Correct?
Mainly to the exterior of the facility.
And then the aesthetics piece of that was being funded through EIC?
Correct.
Okay. That's what I just wanted to clarify, because I'm not, I'm going to think a little bit more about that.
All right. You got a motion and a second?
Tell me more about, tell me more about, I'm sorry, more about what exactly you're asking since, since when it was last left was in EIC's hands. So just a little bit more about what you're wanting us to do.
Well, what I would like to do is go back to where we ended, where we left it, and look at it again, and bring it forward, and look at monies, and look at the plan that we had, and revisit it.
Is this like an information kind of thing, or any anticipated action?
Well, we would see what would come out of that.
We'd update, yeah, update, but I mean, you're not asking for a specific action?
No.
Okay. Except to bring it back.
Except to bring it back, and let's take a look at it in the future.
All right. Okay, we got a motion second. All in favor, raise hands? Wait, what?
I don't know if we have a second.
We have a second. I'll second it.
Ms. Hughes? All right. All in favor, raise hands? Okay, it's 3-0, passes. Okay. Anything else for future agenda?
Just to confirm, you got it? Against?
Against.
Are you voted?
Well, us two.
Did you vote for it?
No.
No, you didn't? Okay. It's 4-0. 4-0, okay.
It was 3-2.
3-2. 3-2. You said 3-0 originally.
Oh.
Yeah, 3-2.
It's late in the evening. Okay. All right. Anything else? All right? If not, and is there a cause to do an executive session?
Yes, sir.
There's not much enthusiasm. This meeting is adjourned.